At six thirty, so let's open the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board.
Motion to accept. Minutes of February ninth.
I second with the discussion.
Is there any discussion?
It's just a minor change. Last page. The top of the page. One, two, three, it's in the third, the end of the third sentence, it says, given that residents are already living there, I took that to mean in the development.
Oh, that's, we're on the select one.
Select one, sorry about that. I had no problem with that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, February fourteenth, minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this one?
On the second page. Uh, the top paragraph, three sentences down near the end of the sentence, it says, um, the board had concerns about not getting test results because there are residents already living there, which sounds like they're living on the development, that was the way I interpreted it first, but they're living in the neighborhood, I think.
Uh, no.
No?
No, there are residents in phase three.
Pardon me?
There are people living in phase three.
Oh, okay.
Houses that are occupied.
Yeah.
Yeah, gotcha.
Any other? Discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item two. Is. A and R lot, seven and eight on Pleasantdale Road.
I had some issues with this one.
So if I could, um, before you get too much involved with this one, so there was an A and R submitted for lots seven and eight, however, it was discovered that some changes need to be made to this plan that was submitted, we're expecting a replacement plan, so we recommend a, uh, an agreement to postpone the public meeting and an agreement to extend the final action deadline. We have the consent of the applicant in honor.
Oh, okay. Continue to?
Uh, so from tonight until three fourteen, and then the extension final action from three nine until three sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Dave, is that, is that change gonna be physical changes to the plan, or?
I can, if you don't mind. No, so that lot number eight is affected by the Rivers Bill. So, we've been to the, we've been to the Conservation Commission, and the DEP commented on it, and that's what drove this A and R, but when we went to the Concom, they wanted a little bit more and different, so we have to extend the A and R and make one of the lots bigger.
Okay.
And so, the reason for the jogging, is that what you're concerned about?
No, I'm, Cleveland, what I'm concerned about, and I'll interrupt you real quick, is that the frontage is one forty-six, and I'm a pretty good math guy with right angles, and it says two hundred setback, and I'm not, the math isn't making sense to me.
That's after setback line, two hundred, but there's going.
Yeah, there's.
There's a jog, it's a hundred, it's less than two hundred at the street, but it's a setback line because it's on the curve, it's, the width is determined at the thirty foot setback line.
Yeah.
On that jog, where it comes into play.
Since when? I always thought the frontage was the main property bounds.
Well, Julie, even, even with the setback, I can't believe that curve is fifty feet a curve, that's just, because the frontage is one forty-six, that means you'd have to add fifty-four feet of frontage.
Along that sideline, you're right. We, that's how your rules are written, we've done this quite a few times.
I know, but.
But I'm gonna explain, I'll be at the next meeting, I'll explain, I'll show it.
Okay, okay, let's, let's do that then, let's, let's do that, 'cause I'm struggling.
No, I'll have it color coded so we can see how it is.
Oh, great, thank you.
And also bring up the subdivision rule, or the rule that allows that set, where the setback.
Yeah, he notes it down here in the frontage requirement, so I just hadn't, anyhow, I just, I was doing my math where the new jog was gonna be, and I'm like, one forty-six to two hundred, ain't no way fifty-four feet's coming out of that, so, if there was a curve like this, I'll buy it, but when the curve, anyhow, we'll, we'll explain it next time, we won't waste any more time on that.
And just for the hell, if I wrote on the bottom, was this lot in a Zone A, and has Concom signed off on it?
We're in front of Concom right now, it's not Zone A, but it's the Rivers Bill. Same thing.
Yeah, worse. Okay, good.
Oh, come on.
So does everybody read the clock, it says six forty-five? I think it says six forty-five.
No.
I have to be at another meeting at seven o'clock.
So, uh, since we do have almost ten minutes.
Bryce Lemon.
I guess we can skip down to item five, Bryce Lemon Estates.
Could I ask about Britnall? I just want to get back to that, David had said to me that you guys were saying that we weren't, uh, and Dave, I forgot to send you those plans, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you can, that'd be great.
Uh, that we weren't complying with some of the stuff that Kyle had written, see, he keeps, he keeps putting on, on Britnall Estates, um, he kept putting on that the, he had received the sewer, uh, inspection report, and we, we verified with Joe Buckley that he, and it was on an email, Carl, I guess Carl had two emails, but I think, uh, Tommy sent it to the wrong one, but Joe confirmed that he had it in November. Um, the plans, I thought I had sent the plans the day before, but I, I didn't, um, I, I guess I didn't, so I was gonna go back to my office and send him the plans today after I talked to him, I forgot to do it.
You're talking about the second call to.
The second, the second.
Yeah, Mike Barone's design.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the one that I, I talked to Dave, I just, we got the report, but we didn't have any plans, so, of course, I asked the engineering question, how did anybody check this if they don't have the plans?
I have the plans on there.
Okay, perfect, that's all, I just wanted everything in the documents, Cle, that's all I was looking for.
I get you.
And Joe had asked, before he says anything more, that it's a pass-through, that he's happy with it, he wanted to see the report, and the next question would be, can I look at the plans with the report, we didn't have those, so.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
You got it, and then, so, most of the other stuff we verified that we had, we had supplied, um, he was looking for the gravel, the compaction reports, compaction tests from Station twenty-seven to thirty, um, we, we supplied those, and, and he resent them to Kyle before he left, so a lot, a lot of the stuff that's been hanging out there that's been old, that he's had on the list, um, we did, we did take care of, but it didn't, it didn't get taken off, so, um, I just wanted, and then David, David asked me to get back to him and, and let him know all that stuff, and I, and I didn't send him the report today that I, that I did, so, I wanted to let you guys know that.
Yeah, if we can get that to Kevin, and then just get that, that report updated, and that takes care of our, our headaches.
He sent me off the Word doc today so I can put in there when everything was done, I'll, I'll take care of that in the next couple of days.
All right, Dom, you said number five.
Yes.
In our, in our folder that we picked up, all right, picked up, only went to four.
You went to four because we don't have this other information.
No other information.
The information's on the agenda, as you recall.
We just don't have anything.
These are just kind of running.
This is an active subdivision, although something that the board may want to discuss now, if you want to get into it, there were some bond requests made for Bryce Lemon, Maple Hill, and, uh, Britnall Estates.
Some what?
Interesting, bond reduction requests.
And, and a new bond for Britnall.
And a new bond for Britnall.
Believe it or not, most of the houses down there are sold.
On Britnall?
In the first phase, yeah.
Okay, first of all, Bryce Lemon. I'm assuming we are still holding the, what, ten percent?
Phase one and phase two, you are.
Okay, you know, which we do, which we do for a year.
One year, correct.
Uh, after the, the roads are accepted.
Yeah.
However, remember the fiasco with the road acceptance, where the town voted to accept them two years ago?
Just the first one.
First one, right.
Phase one, I could really, me personally, I could release phase one now, it's been two years.
Phase two, May will be one year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you, you guys, we, we had talked about this before, you said, we're gonna give it one year from last May, not the November meeting, phase two.
Get it through winter is what we want to do. I have no, do you need a motion to release phase one's ten percent bond on, um, Bryce Lemon?
If you get a motion, that'd be good.
Okay, there's the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that one?
So, well, how, how will that be followed up to me, will, uh, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah.
Show it to zero, or, or on his sheet?
I would think that'd be the way to go, because the sheet is really what's been tracking, right, all along the way.
Yeah, we'll just.
We'll just do zero.
Yep.
And that document will go to you, so you can go to the bank and get your bond signed off.
Yeah, kinda. But Teresa's Drive and, um, phase two, I know it's not till May, but I figured I'd just put the request in now, and, you know, you guys could do your thing and look at, look it over, and if it's fine, it is, if it's not, let me know.
We'll put it on our calendar.
There you go, okay.
On the calendar for an inspection before the release, or just the release?
I'd say evidence, put it, give Kevin a May first inspection date, 'cause that, that's basically.
Yeah, that's the.
The end of, that's springtime, basically, so we'll get through March and April, and check it May, and if it's good on May, our first meeting, we could release it in May. It's my suggestion.
Anyway, all in favor of Bryce Lemon reduction?
Aye.
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 Aye. Still the three minutes left.
So, if I could, so what's the action being taken on Bryce Lemon phase two, and maybe, you're gonna take an action now, or just leave that as something to be put in the calendar, or?
Just put it on the calendar.
Yes, just give, oh, Kevin's here, so we can tell.
Just do an inspection for May first.
Yeah?
Yeah, 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 and that's, that's the two years?
That's one, that's one year. Yeah, we've got a one year.
And then if there's no issue, then just bring that one down to zero as well?
That, zero would be next year, all right?
No, no, no.
We started at May for phase two.
Phase two, okay.
And for Teresa Drive, and then, but the one for Britnall Estates, you're gonna probably need release a covenant in at least a month.
You requested a bond.
A bond for there, yes.
And has that request been forwarded?
Well, I think that's what, tonight is far, just since Kevin's here.
Okay, well, we should be able to take care of that, anybody have any trouble with having Kevin prepare bond amount for Britnall Estates?
No. But that'll include the, that'll include money left over for the final coding, since we didn't do that, correct, you just got it in passable state?
A lot of other things, too, you got.
Yeah.
You got base coat over the top.
Yeah.
You know, uh, trees, bounds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All that stuff.
Okay.
Topco, yeah, curb sidewalks, you know.
But you got the culverts in, so.
Culverts, uh, water and sewer is in.
Water sewer done, yeah, all testing's done, even tied into the pump station.
Okay.
All right, good. Need a motion? Just typically, we just do it, we don't.
Yeah, I know, we, we don't usually use that, we don't usually do a motion just to, uh, allow a bond, that's for the, so, I'll just, probably should follow up with a letter to Kevin, even though he's here and knows it.
All right, five and six hundred, though?
Yeah.
Yes, David, there's nothing on Bear Hill, I just have one question, which Cle did, having a brain death with your superintendent.
Tommy?
Tommy, did he talk with the building inspector about that large boulders that were getting dumped on a couple of the properties that were facing Palmigusset, does that ring a bell with you?
No, but if, if.
'Cause Joe was gonna talk to him.
He talks to Joe just about every day, I, I don't know, he may have.
It was Joe and Dave were gonna talk to him, because I had a couple neighbors, they were up there with a sterling dumping boulders, and I'm guessing it's trying to get the, you know, the property.
Oh, yes, no, no, he, he, Joe Buckley called Tommy on that, and I talked to Dave.
Everything good, fine?
There's no, no issues, there's a big, there's a big hill, we, we put like a barrier behind it.
Okay.
And then we're dumping rocks on the inside.
Okay.
To build it up, and they were afraid that it was gonna roll down the hill.
Yeah, I had, I had one of your new houses, and then, uh, Mark Frost had come to me and ask, and I'm going like, I don't have any jurisdiction, but I know who to ask, so I did that, and that's all I did, but.
Yeah, we got, I, I got back the day, basically, we built a big barrier in the back.
Okay.
So it was like a cave, and we just went in there, I mean, we had to bring twelve feet of.
Of large boulders.
Fifty truckloads of rock in there.
Okay.
Build it up.
So if they ask, I could say there's a protective barrier from stopping it from rolling down on Palmigusset.
And it's all done now, so.
Okay, good, that's all I needed, thanks.
And you go back to the building commissioner?
Yes, yeah, that day, I'm sorry. I thought it was your case.
It was like.
Just provide it was the building commissioner who, who Cle was in contact.
Okay, Dave, okay, okay, great, thanks, that's all I have for barrier questions.
Okay, then I guess we're up to item three, it is six forty-six. Tim?
Motion for you to stay?
Yeah. Sure is yours.
Thanks.
So, if I may, Tim, I.
Let me open it up, and then I'll get right to you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was open.
No, no, I want to, uh, we're on item three, which is Hilltop Estates, it's a continuance of a continuance of a continuance for a subdivision, um, at Hilltop Estate, so, we've had reports come in, latest one came in from Carl, we didn't have a chance to review it last time, so this time, um, we were going to go over that, Kevin's here in Carl's absence. And that's it, I opened it up, um, before Cle, does the board have any questions?
Other than the fact that I want it to be dissolved, there are too many waivers, and I am not for it, they asked me to step back in, I was gonna stay out of it completely, but because of the lack of personnel on this board.
Well, also, we want to do the, the processes that should be done.
Yeah, so, if I may.
Okay.
So, first of all, I, I, we met with Kevin this morning, um, and he had a couple of things to say about it, and I, I would hope that he could maybe voice what he said this morning, today, here, we need a continuance to the next meeting, because he has to have a chance to review what we've done, the, the plan itself is, you know, and I, and I brought this up to you guys before, I said, look, don't make me go through all this work if you're gonna just deny it, so, I go through all the work, and now you come, Dickie's like, I wanna deny it, killing me over here, Dick.
I'm sorry, but I mean, it, you know, the further we get into it, the more waivers you're asking for.
Well, I'm only asking for one more than I was at the beginning, and that's the one to stormwater management, but, just, if we could just continue it, and you have an open mind, but if you're, if you're all about denying it, I wanna hear that, too, but if you're gonna do that, then do it now, give me a reason specific, and we'll, and we'll come back, but, I mean, I think, or approve it, whatever you're gonna do, but I don't think it's time for that yet, I think we need to have a continuance to let him review it, and, you know, let me, let me say this, everybody agrees, and I, I know Kevin will back me up on this, that ten or twelve driveways floating on the, on the, on the Britnall Drive.
Oh, I agree with you.
This is a hell of a lot better situation, it's a hell of a lot better environmentally, it's, it's definitely permissible, and the waivers I'm looking for, I mean, two percent grade in the very front, from an eight to a ten percent, we lowered it to ten, I can lower it to eight percent, but it's a driveway, it doesn't make any sense to, to lower that to eight percent, and have those big cliffs on the side and, and retaining walls, that's the really only waiver that I'm looking for that makes any sense, and then I'm looking for a waiver from trees, sidewalks, that kind of stuff, that's, that's easy stuff, but this really is something that's better for environmentally, it's better for safety, it's better for everything, and it gets everything taken into account, the reasons we've had to push it back so many times is because Kyle keeps coming back with the stormwater management stuff, the other stuff is pretty much put to bed, it's the stormwater management, so this morning, and, and over the last week or two, Julian's office put together another stormwater manager report, I mean, it's two hundred and fifty pages, so he's not gonna be able to go through it in a couple of hours, it needs to be continued to the next meeting, but you can't poo-poo it, Dick, because it's a better situation, I mean, look what you did for Gasparoni, what's he got, eight houses over there? And it's just a driveway, he didn't have to go through this, you guys gave that to him, and, and I'm not, you know, and I, I know that there's no, this one gets that, and that one gets this, and all that other stuff, I'm not saying that, you know, you created a, a, a situation where you have to do it for the next guy, I'm not saying that, but by the same token, that exists over there, and this is, this is actually permissible with a few waivers that I'm asking for that don't make any sense, because it's really just a driveway, all those lots were approved, all the special permits are approved.
But we can't do a driveway, Cle, in a subdivision, that's not.
But that meets most of the subdivision regs.
See, that's the problem, that, that, it's my problem, I won't speak with the rest of the board, we have subdivision regs, we're supposed to file them to letter, yes, we give accept, we give waivers, I'm good with that, that, my biggest, one of my biggest problems now is what's going over on Glenwood Extension with this private driveway, private road stuff, am I gonna get into that with this one now, 'cause this is private?
No.
And?
This is private for good. That was, that's a whole different situation.
I get it.
And, and they, and they still shot it down, which I don't think they should've, but they did, and the people hired a guy.
I'm fearful about this whole private stuff and subdivision, that's my opinion, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it's one of my tough parts right now, I'd rather have a town road, a town street, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, you know, I mean, it's not, and I don't have to go that much further to make it a town street, it just doesn't make any sense for the town, go ahead, Kevin.
If I may, um, I think what you have here is, is a, is a policy question, whether you, whether you wanna be, 'cause if you do one, you gotta, it's, the door's open to that coming on in the future.
And that's my, that's my tough part, Kevin, right now, is our, our attorney gave us an opinion that it should be filed subdivision regs, that was the opinion that KP gave us, and again, I don't have problems with exceptions like cul-de-sacs, having them, not having a center, I don't have a problem with streetlights not being used, we've done that before, that, there's no precedent being set there, it's, again, without the stormwater, that was a huge one, and then the grade, um, I, I, again, don't quote me on this, but I thought there was eight or nine, um, waivers being asked, which was a lot of waivers, we've done four or five in the past, but never, maybe I'm wrong on that.
Well, I mean, the waivers of sidewalks, bounds, street trees, street lights, the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
They're, they're a little.
What's wrong with bounds?
Huh?
What's wrong with bounds?
They're paying me ass, and they don't need me.
They're paying you, but you ought to talk to some of your people for turn around that you, you know, in, in the past that have bought your places, now they have to hire another engineer to go back out to find out where the bounds are, and that's not right, you should have the bounds marked.
We have bounds in subdivisions, but I'm, I'm looking for a waiver from bounds in this subdivision, 'cause the bounds are only gonna encompass the road, right? So I'm asking for a waiver from them, so, I just, I'm asking, look, if you're gonna, if you're gonna deny it, don't make me do any more work, deny it tonight, give me a reason specific, and I'm going away.
Well, no, that, that was something that I, I wanted to get into with the board, instead of spending your money on doing this report, is it more cost-effective to, I don't know, look at another option, another design, another ish, another way of doing it, or?
No, I'm just gonna, I, if, if you, if you guys deny it, you have to, you know.
Specific, yeah.
You have to do all of that stuff that's legal and all that shit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you did, if you're gonna do that, I think it's a mistake, do it, give me the reasons, and I'll, and I'll come back, and I'll fix it, and if, if, then you have to approve it, but at the same time, what it is right now, it's, it's permissible, it's better for the environment than me going out, building ten houses on those big hills, and I told you, you guys, I asked you three months ago, if you're not gonna do it, tell me now, I just spent another twenty grand on the thing, maybe thirty, right, Julian?
Almost thirty.
You should've told me back then if you didn't like it.
I'm glad you didn't.
A lot of that, and Cle, I'm not defending the, the board on this, but a lot of, those plans weren't finalized when we looked at those, there was a lot of work that needed to be done before we could, I mean, back then, the plans weren't, I mean, the, if I remember correctly, the, uh.
Detention ponds.
Detention ponds weren't done, there was the grade, uh, they had, they.
You had your dip number two out.
The only difference, no, the one, we took the one out down the bottom of the hill, and we brought the, the water across the street.
Yeah.
You know, instead of running it along the side of the road, but basically, the plans, the only, the only thing that Kyle had a lot of comments on was the, the things we were asking for waivers on, and the stormwater management, we think we've solved the stormwater management part of it, but Kevin has to look at.
And I'm, and I'm at a quandary do. I mean, I, I'm getting a feeling from the board, just discussions, again, there's been no official vote, that even with the stormwater, because there's so many waivers on the, um.
Does anybody know how many waivers there are, Tim, I don't know how many there are.
It was, it was, the last count I had was eight or nine, but I could be wrong, that's, that's.
It's basically a driveway, and, and here's the thing, what you're gonna have is a driveway to that last lot, right in that spot.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna get any say on it, I'm just gonna put a driveway in, and I'm gonna put ten more in right along the front, or, if you give me a reason specific and they make sense, I'll fix it. But don't make me spend any more money.
Well, that's.
Give me a continuance, and listen, listen to what he has to say, and, and alls I want from you right now is to, is to have it continued to the next meeting, because everything I've submitted pretty much answers all the questions that Kyle had. That's what I'm looking for.
Stormwater management, whose jurisdiction?
Concom.
Good question.
Conservation.
Ultimate. Conservation or DBW?
Well, but it, but except that your rules and regulations authorize you to enforce stormwater management policy, so.
Part of our subdivision regs.
You have granted yourselves the authority to review for, which is what, what the towns should all do, this, this particular project, there's no wetland application, so it's never gonna go in front of conservation, so if it wasn't for the planning board, uh, stormwater management would go unreviewed, and some think that if it's not in front of conservation, they're excused from the requirements, which is not true, they are, you're supposed to comply, it's just that it doesn't, it doesn't get reviewed by conservation, unless a planning board has taken the authority to do the review, which you have.
Well, then, I have to have engineer tell me about Zone A water, watershed protection, you know, how far up does it go, I mean, does it go all the way up to Britnall?
There's no wetlands there, there's, there's no river there.
But you're, you're taking your detention pond water and running it into molten pond.
Oh, no, no.
No, 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 they're a hundred feet away.
No, no. Way, way away, Dick, it's not going anywhere, yeah. Not at all, it's going, we're, we're piped it across the street, because that's what Kyle asked us to do.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
And then it goes to a level spreader, and it spreads itself out, and dissipates all the energy out of it, and fixes it, but the, but all those pools at the top, those all meet stormwater management, Kevin can verify that, but they do, I'm telling you that.
Julian, on your plan, is there, typically on the plans, I've always seen the request for waivers as part of the signature, I didn't see.
First page.
First page, I missed it, damn it, I was looking at. Am I missing, either, am I not seeing it, I'm looking at, first page of the plan, it says.
See waiver on number one right here.
Oh, I've only got sheet of three of twelve, I don't have one of twelve. I don't have one of 12.
Then it says waiver right there, waiver there.
Yeah, I just typically, to answer Clea's question, I wanted to make sure I was exact.
Is it because this isn't a, gonna be a public roadway? It's a private road for these houses. So that's why we're asking for more, 90% of those waivers. It's not gonna be taken care of by the town.
Yeah, and see, then...
And then who takes care of it?
It's the HOA. In good conscience, I have a hard time with that, I really do. We haven't had success in this town with HOAs. I apologize.
It's a common driveway, it's a common driveway HOA. That's, I mean, that's what they have down at Glenwood Place. I mean, the select board didn't grant it. Now they have, they hired their own plow guy, and he's plowing the road.
But there was other things that were requested in that, you know.
All the senior housing projects in town are all that way.
Who's gonna be taking care of, you know?
That's different regs.
Keeping a detention pond clean and, and any of the ditches and stuff like that.
Well, that's always, that's in every subdivision though, Dick, you got an HOA. That's part of every subdivision's HOA now.
HOA, yeah.
And that's what this, that's what will take care of this road and the others.
I, I have not seen it yet. It hasn't been in effect long enough to see it happen, though. That's what I'm saying.
I'm just, again, it's opinion of mine, and so I guess I'll look to the board. It's a board thing. Not my feelings.
My concern is really with the, the stormwater management, where all that water is going, and I don't feel it personally, I have a good, really good grasp on that, and, you know, I'm really not concerned about the slope of the road or the layout of the houses. It's where all that water is going, and I'm very glad that you...
It's all in that new report that Kevin's gonna be reviewing.
Hello, this is, this is Michael Boccherba.
Right.
Um, so the stormwater report that we've provided shows that there is no water leaving the site at a higher rate than it is currently leaving the site today, the way the project was designed. In that way, there's no excessive flows reaching anywhere that it isn't currently reaching And that's part of the attenuation part of the stormwater report.
Michael, Julian, do either one of you have the, uh, sheet one of 12 in front of you?
I do not have it in front of me.
Thanks.
What, the waiver sheet?
Yeah, it's, it's on page one of 12.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to sort through this packet to get to it.
I have a heat, a blue scale.
Oh, perfect. I can read. That's one thing, the glasses are still good. Thanks.
I have it right here as well, so.
Not seeing it. Maybe it's on the front, it's on the front page. There they are. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, so there's 13. 13 waivers.
What are they?
Oh, let's see. Let me read them off. I'll read them off for the waiver one is requested 20, from the 25-foot radius at the street line of intersections. Waiver two is request from 3% leveling zone for a distance of 50 feet to allow 4%, I guess grade for 50 feet. So that's not slope, that's at the bottom. Waivers request for maximum of 8% road grade, which we've talked about, to allow, it says 10% here, so that'll have to be upgraded, 'cause I think you dropped it. Ours is...
We dropped it to 10, yeah.
Yeah. A waiver requested for full compliance of stormwater management, that's what we're talking about now. Sidewalks located along the private way. Eighteen, then there's a waiver requested for an 18-inch bank run gravel plus 6-inch select gravel to allow for a 12-inch of gravel. A waiver's requested for security bars at Alfar's Culverts, that's not a big one for me. Waivers requested for the headwalls at the Culverts ends. Waivers request for curbs along some of the roadway, country drainage design. Are waivers with streetlights and street trees, that, that, we can deal with that. Cultusack plantings. And, and then request for monuments, private ways provoked. I'm guessing it's not monuments, it's bounds, yeah.
No, so they're called, they're called monuments.
Monuments, okay, so three of these 13, or maybe four of the 13 I could buy, but then there's nine that are in there, that's...
But they're easy.
Yeah, but the problem is, we've, we've taken, Clea, our, our subdivision regs and sort of done this to them, and it's my opinion again.
Because it's a private road, it's not gonna be made by the town.
That's not what our, so, so here's the thing.
The town doesn't have to touch this again.
If you want those all changed...
It'll have to be a town road, then. That'll be the key component.
It's gonna be a town road, and it's gonna be 25 lots. And so, I mean, it, it's, these are big estate lots, they're gonna be nice homes up there. It's a driveway, it should be looked at, it should let Kevin finish his, his review of, of the stuff that we submitted, 'cause I believe that we've answered all of their questions. And if you don't wanna allow a waiver, don't allow it. And if, you know...
Yeah, but a lot of these waivers, Clea, preclude from this thing being built with all these headwalls. I mean, I'm not a mechanic, Kevin, so I'm gonna ask you to...
No, I think, I think...
No, all that is, is a flared end instead of a concrete headwall. That, we do that, every project in the last 20 years has been granted that waiver. The regulations say a concrete headwall. We've been using the flared end plastic pipe, so they snap on the end of the pipe. It's made, made to do that.
What about the leveling zones, Julian? There's, I've never seen that in any of our subdivisions before with these maximum leveling zones.
That is right at where one road matches the other. The regs say 3%, and I'd be surprised if any of them ever are done 3%. 4% is, is pretty much the standard throughout the state for, for roads at the intersection. But that's, that's, we could look into that also.
Well, if you, but I mean, 1%, if you want me to drop it to, from 4 to 3, but alls that's doing is just making a bigger cut. So we're coming down, and you got a level area at the bottom of the road.
Right, you're gonna have bigger banks on both sides.
So you're gonna just have bigger banks on the side of the road. That's the reason we're asking for the waivers. I mean, you want me to, if I, if I go from 10% to 8%, oh, you got, what, 13 or 14-foot sidewalk cliffs on a driveway?
A typical driveway can go up to 15%, which is gonna be what those driveways, if you don't build it this way, there'll be 10 driveways that are gonna be 15% in some places, which is very steep, and we're avoiding that.
All these waivers make sense, but again, if you don't grant the waiver, and I gotta go back and put, these make sense from a practical standpoint. Listen, listen to the review agent when he, when he has, has, has time to, to review it. If, if you could just keep your mind open, but if you're gonna deny it, deny it tonight. Don't deny it, don't, don't wait. Deny it and give me reasons specific.
One of the reasons why I get so ticked off about this is the fact, yeah, we shouldn't be talking. We should have a, just a separate thing, so sitting down to yak with our engineer, and not at the dead end of something here for crying out loud, where you gotta start thinking, you know, hey, you gotta do it now.
Or just give us, give us, give us an extension and, and then take some time and, you could talk with them individually, it doesn't have to be a meeting, but, I mean, Kevin, can you give me your opinion as to what?
Well, it's up to what the board wants to hear. I think you have a policy decision here, whether you're willing to deviate. I think that the, the waivers are one part of the issue. And I mean, private development typically does not, is not built to subdivision standards. We do over 55s that are done to a lesser standard. But I'm hearing the board's got a lot of discomfort with this. I think you, you have a bylaw that says you can have, have common driveways up to three, I believe it's three residents on a driveway.
Yeah, yeah, with a special permit.
With a special permit.
Right.
That suggests to me that there's a threshold where the town says beyond that. It sounds to me like this board is... Well, yeah, it sounds like the board's uncomfortable going beyond that. You, if you're asking my opinion, if you were to compare a common driveway for these lots versus individual lawn development, it's certainly beneficial to the town from an environmental and stormwater standpoint, collecting that, dealing with it collectively, and having it, having a stormwater system that's managed by an owners' association. DEP likes that. They have an entity that if that system fails, you can get them by the scruff of the neck and go and fix your system. So...
Have you ever seen that, Kevin? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
'Cause at least, and again, this is just my experience in Rutland, not Holden, Pax, or anything like that. The homeowners' associations, in my opinion, seem almost ineffective and useless.
Well, here's why they're, they're important, is they go to the deed. Ultimately, if you, if the town went after a homeowners' association and said, you gotta act on this, now all their mortgagers, mortgage companies got a letter saying, you're going after their, their deed. It's like a lien. You have a lot of, a lot of leverage to get stuff done. I can tell you, the DEP uses this for wastewater disposal systems. They're, they find it very satisfactory for that reason. They have an entity that they can get by the scruff of the neck.
A legal entity, okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's key. Now, it, it means the town will be having to kind of keep an eye on things there, or let it go till it fails, and then you have to go after it. I mean, you don't really have a stormwater authority to drive around town checking and making sure private drains all work. So you're probably gonna end up having a system that runs until...
It floods Brittenel, and then...
Yeah.
And then that's where, and that's where Director Buckley gets involved.
Yeah. I mean, you could, you could write provisions.
Over and down. Oh, come on, brain. Highland, but downhill on the right-hand side.
Oh, you meant the, what's it called?
Brunel.
Brunel East.
Yep. What happened to that HOA? That was all set up and everything else, and you hear nothing. Even the town, for crying out loud, swept it under the rugs.
Yeah.
There's, a lot of times with drainage, it doesn't fail, you know? I mean, Rolling Ridge has been there for, what, 25 years now, 30 years? It's not, never been a problem with the drainage. Nobody takes care of it.
Didn't KP come back and say that, that the board, in their opinion, needs to treat this as a subdivision?
Yes, that's correct.
And therein lies my tough part, Kevin, is that we got legal counsel telling us to treat this as a subdivision, not as a private, a, a private development, so I'm...
I think you have no other, I think you may have no other mechanism to approve this. So that's a way of developing this plan and then waiving the standards down to what one would hope or think that a, a private, um, common driver would, would be built for. But you're talking about, the, the board needs to be comfortable with the number of citizens that are gonna live here on a road that, you know, I mean, someday it may break down or something, and...
It's up to them to fix it.
It's up to them to fix it.
If I, just to clarify, I don't believe town council made a distinction between a public road or a private road. It just has to meet the subdivision standards because of the number of lots in play and what this is trying to accomplish.
So this is a form A. These lots are already existed. We're not creating lots on this. That's already done. We're just trying to make a better way to get them.
It's still a subdivision, at least for the purpose of this road.
Yeah, we can't mix it.
Because there's no separate...
We can't mix a special permit estate lots with this subdivision.
Right, and this municipality doesn't have a street opening permit that acts by itself to do what is trying to be done here. So now to create what's in essence is a street opening permit that's being done through the subdivision process.
It's just a mechanism to get in front of the board for approval.
I guess I'm looking for some, I'm between a rock and a hard place. I, I, I do think it's a better choice than having 15 driveways of 1,500 feet apart with, with pipes and water lines going up them. I think that's just gonna be a mess for the town eventually. I mean, I know they're private, but they're, they're gonna be, I mean, I think one of them is 15 or 1,600 feet all the way up to a house using that special permit estate lot. I, I thought that was crazy. I just don't know.
So Kevin gets to review these last two plans, would answer to all the cows. I think that's the start where we should go. Kevin just got it in his lap this morning, so.
Yeah.
I would say this, is, I think the question would be, if they, if they do resolve a lot of these waivers, is the board gonna be comfortable with this project as it stands?
If we could reduce these, these waivers with design upgrades that would reduce them down to a, close to our standard waivers that we give, I would be more comfortable with this project. But right now with 13, I'm just struggling.
What the, I mean, what are the ones that did our standard?
The standard ones, Marilyn, like the, the bottom one, I, I'm not gonna release. That's gonna get, that's gonna happen. I'm, I'm gonna stick to that one. I want those bounds in there, that's just...
Yeah.
I'm tough about that. The second one up, the cul-de-sacs, we don't like those middle cul-de-sacs. I'm okay with that.
So that's gonna go...
The street trees, I...
How many trees were taken down and out of build this thing?
Yeah, that's, that's one I'm struggling with, Dick, I mean...
That's the only thing I'm saying, you know, if you do a complete clearing of property and, and, yeah, I don't mind seeing them.
Again, that's a question.
That's already done. You kidding me? I already cleared all that.
You can put some back up when you're putting the tree, when it...
Well, let me tell you, there's a whole lot more trees gonna get wiped out than are wiped out right now if I build 15 individual houses with septic systems.
We're talking about right now, Clea.
Right now, there, I've already taken out the trees for the road.
Yeah, but how many?
Oh, gosh. Hundreds.
Tons.
So...
Five acres worth.
Would it be, uh...
So one for every 30 feet is all we can...
It wouldn't be a terrible burden to put a few more trees back in front of ours.
To me, that's...
No, but this is gonna, if you, if you let the drive, no, I don't care about that. But if you let the driveway go, then, I mean, that, that's gonna save, these lots, all these lots of 5 acres of acres, I'm gonna have to cut, you know, a couple of acres, 'cause I gotta put a septic system...
10 times the amount of trees.
It'll be 10 times the amount of trees that I cut right now.
No, I understand, Clea, but I really don't wanna hear about the alternative right now. I wanna hear about the one that we're talking about.
And that's, that's an easy waiver. I just thought it would be, it's just a driveway where I didn't have to, but...
Not only that, number 16 on, on Julian's thing, board may require improvement to Brittenel Drive. I want it completely gutted, ran up to subdivision standards and hot-topped.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. But we, but we did talk about one thing...
But it says, you know, may require, may improve.
I'll just keep going. The streetlights, Marilyn, that's pretty much, Dick and I disagree on that, but I'm gonna...
No, streetlights.
Yep.
Go along with that, so there's...
This is requested curbs along some of the roadway. The, the, the some, from my days of engineering, always worries me. What does some mean? In country drainage, drainage design...
If you have country drainage, you can't have curbing.
Right.
Because the water's gonna flow off the road.
The water's gonna flow off the road and swale, so you need a wave from it, 'cause you require a curbing.
Kevin, what's your thought on that one?
Country drainage works well in some areas. Um, a lot has to do with the site. This is not a bad site, but I don't, I don't have any sense of whether this is a good place for it or not. Um.
Okay.
We've done a couple of country drainage projects, one in Milbury, and it, it was pretty successful.
Okay. Could you put that on your list to just have somebody take a look at and give us a, a somewhat opinion, or what would you need to do to be able to?
Well, if you want, I'll comment on the waivers. If you, you.
I was gonna ask that question, but I didn't know if I should do that. Is the board okay with, with, uh, Kevin giving us some comments back on the waivers?
A lot of them, I'm gonna end up kinda throwing back, back at you.
That's what Carl's done. He's done that in the past. I just, I, I, I'm just, I'm struggling, cause some of these, like the curbs, okay, country drains, and the next one is, is head walls at culvert ends. That, I'm an electrical engineer, I don't.
We're just asking for a flat end as opposed to a concrete wall. A head wall is a wall. A flat end is just, you know what a flat end is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's, I mean, I, I, I don't care what I put, but the flat end, you, you guys allow that every time. All my subdivisions have it.
Have you, you've done that in other places, Kevin?
Yeah, we do it. We do.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine. And then the next one is, um, requested security bars. I think, Dick, we've pretty much said, I'm, I'm, that's a standard, Marilyn. We've, the security bars, we sort of didn't want them around culverts.
Oh, around culverts, yeah. I agree with that one.
And then the next one, which is a, a waiver is requested from 16-inch bank run-along gravel plus six-inch select gravel to allow for a 12-inch gravel. So it sounds to me like we're going from a total of 18 inches to 12. Is that correct?
Which is.
That's pretty standard. Most towns, that's 12-inch gravel base is pretty standard.
But our problem is our sub, our subdivision says the 12 and 6.
Yeah.
So we're gonna change that. We're gonna have to.
A waiver. And I am not for it, because I want the road to last for these people that are on a HOA.
Okay, so that's a question. That's one Marilyn can call it. Then request for sidewalks along, along the private way. That one, Clay, I'm really struggling with, cause if we're gonna put these houses up there with these estates and people are gonna have to walk down, I don't know what the rest of the board is, but if I'm gonna call it a private subdivision or whatever one, really like the ability for people not to walk in the road.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I mean, I think maybe, maybe tonight, the, the board should think about a green light or a red light. If, if you're, if this is a problem, I think, I mean, Clay doesn't wanna be paying me or his engineer to go forward. So there's, there's that. If the board wants to move forward, I would suggest we have a workshop. We could sit down, most of the, the waivers, a lot of these waivers are, they're not design waivers. They're, they're waivers that they need to control cost, to, to make it less, you know, less expensive and limit.
We could come up with a, what do I usually use the phrase? A agreement or a, a.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we just talk about these waivers.
Fifty-fifty, yeah.
What they mean, and the board could say, oh, I don't like that, or, yeah, I can live with that, or, or, I can live with something less.
At least to have the discussion where we're gonna.
That's what we need.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm good with that, Clay, then I.
And not, not at the, not at the next meeting. Or this meeting, but something in between.
Before the next meeting.
Yeah. Even if we have to put the meeting out on next.
This is my opinion. I could give a green light to keep going with this if we have that meeting and have Kevin and Julian and Clay and the board sit down and have that discussion and work that through.
Thank you.
I, I, that's my opinion, but I got two other board members.
I agree with that.
Dick?
I'm, I'm gonna try, but you may, you know.
I'll bring you some M&Ms.
I'll bring you some bourbon.
No, 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 no.
I'll swap them off.
He and I rolled off the liquor. Our, 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 our livers are in retirement.
I haven't gone to that meeting.
I would say, from what I've heard from the two other board members, we should probably send that report to Kevin and at the same time have a sit-down, roundtable workshop with your engineer, our engineer, and the board, and try to work this out.
That'd be great.
And I want David there, too.
Perhaps this can be done during the daytime.
Yep.
In the town hall. We'll post it as a meeting, because it's publicly a meeting.
Yep. As long as you don't send it to EverSource, where they see that I'm not working.
You were sick that day.
Yeah. You tell me.
How much time do you need to review this?
Give me a week.
So the 14th of March would be, make sense then?
For the next meeting, yeah.
Continuance date.
Well, you know what? I, I don't think I'm gonna be able to have everything, cause what we're talking about is sitting down and working through this, and then I'm gonna go forward and do a review. I don't think I can.
Could you go for the 28th or this?
The 28th. Yes, that's fine.
Fine.
Everybody okay with that? Dick? 28? Are you, are you here or are you on your way to Florida?
I'm on my way to Florida. I don't know how deep.
All right. I guess I need a.
That's, that's scheduled for our next meeting, then.
Yes, but we wanna have a meeting before that, and so Kevin can have some time to get all the comments and everything together before he comes back with recommendations.
It's my understanding that the, I dares to have the next meeting, the continuance on the 28th of March.
Yes, but we need to have a.
We'll coordinate that.
Yeah.
After this meeting here.
I have to run, but I have to make one more comment before I go. Carl keeps putting on the Britnell Estates list. He wants subdrains. And I, it's all Phil. Can you, can we?
I'll look at that.
Can I look at that, please? Then I gotta run, and thank you so much for the.
All right, we'll move it on, Clay. It's green lighted.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Now we just gotta work the details out.
Let me just, um, think about this for a second. We got the 28th.
28?
Which is our next meeting night.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna have to sign all this.
So I think the motion.
You wanna make a motion for a continuance?
Yeah, from 228 to 328.
Yep, 328, um, at 6:45.
6:45, yep. And then waiver of the, uh, extension of the constructive grant deadline from 7/17 to 8/17 2023.
So moved.
Snuck in?
Any discussion? Dick?
We'll see what happens.
Are you more comfortable with this? I mean, I, I, I'm way more comfortable with sitting down with Kevin and the, and the group, and the lawyer, and the lawyers, and the engineers, Julian and Michael, and try to get this worked out.
I mean, most of this is stuff that, um, it's not, they're not live or die waivers. They just have to figure out whether they can accept them.
I mean, I, I, I hate killing a project, but I just don't want this to be the exception to the rule for our subdivisions, and then everybody beats us over the head, well, you didn't follow subdivision regs for that one.
Right.
I, I just don't, that's one thing is something I truly believe in for Rutland's Planning Board, is that we don't wanna have the, I don't wanna use the word exception, the, the, basically, where we've said that, you know, this one is, is okay, but then the next one is the.
Question for the board, though, is, is the board willing to consider, um, what, what, what are you doing? I mean, this, this is a, this is a.
It's a one-off, the way I look at it, right now.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a deviation from three lots.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Right.
It's, it's a big change.
I think we need to discuss that when we're all sitting around the table.
Okay.
And then the board, at that point, since we'll have a posted meeting, it'll be considered a meeting. We can give opinions, too.
Kevin, um, you think it would be justifiable to have the applicant state in more detail than they've done at L Square why they think the waivers are appropriate or necessary?
Justifying the waivers to the board, it's their job.
Justify the waivers to the board, so.
Yeah. Julian and Michael, you getting that? So you're passing on to Clay? Thanks.
So then you'll have a presentation?
Yes.
The conversation. And the workshops.
We'll have all the, the tools to be able to come up with a, a solution to this, and either, as Clay said, green light or a red light after this discussion. And then, then Julian's, uh, cash flow stream ends or continues?
Oh, keep it going.
All right, darling. Uh, after, if there's no more discussions, I'll call for a vote for the continuance.
Um, do you need a motion?
Oh, we've got the motion. You seconded it.
I, oh, okay.
Discussion.
I.
Dick?
The continuance.
I'm going with I, cause I, I, I like, Kevin, I'm glad you're here, cause you came up with a good solution, where we're just not killing it and gotta come up with it. I mean, ultimately, it could go that way.
Yep.
But I would rather have an opportunity to try to work these out than just, than just kill. That's what, I mean, Dick, ultimately, it might, it might, there might be no way to work it out, and yes, there could be a way, so I wanna give that opportunity. Marilyn?
I would like to do that.
Be thankful that you're here.
Cause if it was me, tell me no.
Because I would probably pack up stuff right now and say goodbye.
Uh, what you doing?
I think that one of the things that we should talk about also on a HOA, should the town hold a bond on all HOAs.
I think that's where we need this business meeting at some time to review our subdivision regs and update them, because I think the HO.
Wait a minute, that was a business meeting. That's why we hired Dave, so we could have a business meeting.
So I need yay or nay, sir?
Yes.
All right, 3-0. I gotta sign. And then I joyfully give the command seat back to the man.
So the question is, does the man get to come to that meeting, since part of it seems to be about policy?
Uh, he can't.
He's waiting a meeting, I don't have to go to.
Yeah. 28th day, last day of February. Okay, are you billing on it at Carl's rate or your rate?
Whichever's more.
No, Kevin, you were a big help, cause I, I was struggling with this. I just.
I'm thankful you're here.
Yeah, I was really going down the path of red lighting, cause I just don't want an exception to the subdivision.
It's a reasonable question, is if, if it, if the question is just more than the board is willing to consider in the end, you know?
If we can work some of these waivers out, I'm more than happy to go forward with the project. It's just 13 waivers is, is, is large to me. So, and again, you got, you're gonna have time to look at that stormwater management. That'll be a, a good help, too.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds like you're gonna be busy.
You know, I did.
Okay, Captain, the seat chair.
I don't know where Zoney and stuff like that comes into things like that, if it.
I'll check that over there, just to make sure.
If you would, because it's, uh, getting involved in the whole town lately.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, next agenda item, public hearing, uh, 79 to 81 Main Street, special permit marijuana cultivator.
Yep.
The board will know with me?
Actually.
I believe so.
I think so, yes.
All right, very good.
Yeah.
Nice to see you all. Unfortunately, you're stuck with me more frequently for the next, uh, next few months.
That's okay, that's okay.
Unless I can get Carl to come back.
Anyway, my finding doesn't like it there at all, and it'll come back.
How do we make that happen?
I like that.
Is there a boss, maybe? He could know that we transfer, remember?
District 3, right at Plantation Street?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So a couple of drive-bys of the building might fix that.
I like your style.
Get in trouble with that.
Well, Central Mass, the transportation is moving in, into that building.
CRPC?
Yes.
Oh, are they? Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes, the transportation group is.
Oh, good. Oh, just the transportation.
Just the transportation group.
Oh.
Yeah. So it'll be interesting.
Nice to see you all. Good luck with your hunt, cause I know how bad ours is going, trying to find a mechanic. We're going on three years, love. All right.
Okay, uh, and this is a continuation, not a, it's like a postponed.
Prior meeting, yep.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, let's continue this hearing on the application of, 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 uh, Mass Tree Holdings LLC and Rutland Plaza for a special permit. Uh, and I believe we have just recently received some additional information, uh, including a copy of the plans, and I believe also a copy of the provisional license.
That's correct.
So, uh, I'm assuming that's what you people are here for?
Yes, sir.
If you could just give me a quick second, I'm trying to get this information up on the screen here.
Yep.
Very large file size, it's a little finicky here.
Couple seconds, you know?
Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
Here's the proof of what I was looking for. From the CCC. All those norm are, when I look through them, everything that's in that little, you can't read it, eight and a half by 11. It's on the east side drawings.
And we did a sidewalk of the building.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the plans are up there. The applicant is here as well.
So, um, would you like to make any kind of a presentation or that sort of thing?
Nice to see you again.
Yes.
Now, listen, I, I'd be happy to address any questions you have. I, I know we did a walkthrough together. It's a pleasure to meet you all. I know a few around here. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um.
Mr. Chairman, so, a little bit of background here. So these plans just came in today. Um, my suggestion to the applicant was that the applicant walk you through page by page of the plans. I can tell you that we received supplemental finds of fact in the provisional license. It might be useful for the applicant to walk you through the figures, and then if you have any questions after that, then to ask those questions or ask as you go, however you'd like to handle it.
That sounds like a great idea.
If you want me to walk you through on the screen or on the paper?
Well, probably.
On the screen?
On the screen. You can maybe follow on the paper.
Yeah, let me put, let me figure out the big one. All right.
So I have the plans set, so if you want to tell me the specifics on it, I can do that.
So the first three pages on this set are gonna be legacy plans. Uh, just to demonstrate that we're not really making any kind of substantial change to the building. We're just working within the confines of what's already there. Um, and we've gone back to 1973, the original, uh, plan, uh, site plan that were approved by the board in 2007 and drafted 2006, uh, as-built plans that go back 2008. Um, and we haven't really made any kind of substantial change, uh, to the building or to the site plan. Uh, this, uh, it would be SP1. Uh, that's our proposed site plan. You see the plan here? Uh, no, that's the one from 2007. Uh, if you go forward, I believe.
Colored one?
Yep. Yeah, that's an as-built. That's another as-built that was done. That's in 2005 as-built.
So this is the existing honey farms?
Yes, yeah, that's the existing honey farms.
Family farms now.
Oh, is that what it's called?
Yeah, they changed their name.
Excellent.
Honey who's gone to.
No coffee. No coffee. They kicked him out, huh? No coffee. Yeah, I gotta go to Dunkin's and get, I'll leave that one out. So the portion of the building that we, uh, have signed lease on is here in yellow. Okay. And all of the other tenants in the building are in blue, and that includes CrossFit. Auto shop in the back. Auto shop. Yep, 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 yep. Yep. Yeah, chiropractor. Laundry.
Boy, still, I didn't realize that building was that big.
Yeah.
Huge.
It is. We took just a little over half.
We only saw the yellow part.
Yeah.
I know it.
Yeah, that was big.
That was big.
And I've been back here for inspections, and those bays are huge.
Oh, yeah.
On total, it's something like 36,000 square feet, including, yeah. Between all the neighbors.
Made a great Amazon warehouse for miniature for us.
Yeah, right.
Why'd they build one in Worcester?
They're never gonna use that.
No, it's, it's a returns facility, from what I hear.
And it's empty.
Yeah. Tore down the mall.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Oh, well. So the next page is just a visualization of this, but as a perspective, just so you can see how it sits and what we actually occupy in the building. It is if you're driving down Main Street. You're right where it says 1950. And, and the yellow. Is what we occupy. I meant the trucks, the yellow trucks and green trucks, what?
What's coming and going?
No, well, they're not coming and going from there. Those are just doors. So, yeah, uh, yeah, our neighbor doesn't really, you know, he, he's working out of the back of a pickup truck. He's the, yeah, the water. But these yellow ones are what you're gonna be doing for your? No, we only have, we're only using one of the loading docks. Okay. For in and out. Um, this door only really gets used if a tank has to get replaced, and a big one. Okay. Um, but. So that's, that's basically a maintenance door, basically, for? Yeah, 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 it's not really for any other purpose. All right. Um, but yeah, all, all the traffic happens out of this door here on the loading dock. Then if we go to the plans, uh, so that would be one of the loading dock shipping and receiving doors on the next page. Nice, where's that? That's right, right down. Right there? Right there. Okay. This is, looks like a. That's another utility door that doesn't. Okay. Yeah. All right. It's only for purposes of equipment, moving in and out. Yeah, you're gonna have a hard time getting a truck over a generator and a electrical transformer. That's, that's a pad, uh, that's getting poured. That, that doesn't exist yet. Yep. Um, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're not really, right now on the site plan, traffic moves this way. So this is definitely not in the way, and there's parking. Existing parking right here, yeah. I just was like, you really can't use that door much for maintenance, with those two guys sitting there. No, this, this door here is to an electric room. Talking about this guy right here, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 that's the big, yeah, that's a 12 by 16 foot. Okay, all right, good. Yeah. Excellent. A vault, outstanding. Packaging room vault, security, IT. It's gonna be a full-sized, uh, electrical room. This'll be nice.
So when they're done with this and they wanna do something else, they're bringing a, I think, you know, there'll be a sheriff's office, and these'll be cells, and.
Yeah, right.
Or they'll expand and CrossFit will cease to exist.
Or they'll expand, and CrossFit will cease to exist.
Hey, we said, "Breathe in."
The, the beautiful thing is, it's all built out of modular panels, so we can pick it up and move it.
I'm pretty sure you're not gonna move that vault.
Not, no, not the vault, not the electric room.
Yeah, that's not going anywhere.
No, 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 that's, you're gonna have to chip that one out.
Out of curiosity, employee-wise, what's your estimate? Gestimate, maybe that's a better word for it.
It's three live active over six-hour turns, and that's pretty much at peak. This system is automated. It runs itself. It's only one guy, you know. I can't have machines with scissors to cut things down, but.
No ADA yet.
Not yet, no, yeah, no, yeah, give, give it ten or fifteen years.
I was trying to get an idea of employees on the property and stuff, so.
Yeah, it's a lot less than was contemplated. No, 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 three on shift.
Maybe ten a day, something like that, over three shifts.
Okay. I was gonna say, alright.
Yeah, if marijuana doesn't work out, you can grow tomatoes.
Heirloom tomatoes.
There, there you go.
Organic.
Heirlooms.
Make more money, yeah.
Heirlooms.
Okay.
When I was looking at this, I was trying to figure out where the bathrooms are.
Okay, so, we have, alright, here, I'll show you on the big one.
Okay.
So, here's where we have bathrooms contemplated. We have one bathroom that's right at the entrance of the building, in the vestibule. Then, we have one bathroom that's in washdown, and then, for employees, we have an additional bathroom back here.
Okay.
Uh, in this building. And they're all ADAing.
Mm-hmm, oh, good.
Quiet.
Yeah, I saw that one. I missed this one, so, I thought it was a long walk from here to there.
Yeah. One, for employee purposes, they will have to walk back and go back through washdown, if they use that bathroom.
I see, yeah.
That's how we control contamination between
Right.
outside areas and process areas.
Yep.
So far.
Oh, it's very, very interesting. So, this is your, your grow areas?
Yes, here, uh, we keep a set of mothers, uh, which, in essence, we just keep them living indefinitely. Take trimmings, put them into racks here, turn them into babies, move them into here, turn them into small children, and then, turn them into large children, and harvest them in these areas.
So, you also have production?
I'm sorry?
Are you, you have production at this?
No, no, this is just strictly cultivation. Uh, we'll then go and dry, package into bulk set, and it's for distribution.
And then ship to distribution, through this guy right here, I presume?
No, through that same loading dock.
Okay.
So, all the flow. Yeah, all the flow, it, it comes in one door, and it comes out the same door.
On-time delivery, beautiful.
And that way, the security office sees what goes in, sees, sees what comes out. They're right in front of the vault. You can't cheat the system.
Yep.
So, you raise them from little slips?
Yeah.
All, all the way to adolescence?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then let them go.
And then their friends, the greenbacks, come in. With, uh,
Then it's open.
Jacksons, Washingtons, Benjamins.
Grants.
Grants, yeah. Well, as far as I can go anymore.
Yeah.
Alright. Excellent. This is just the same.
With dimensions.
Yep.
Just to give you some scale. I mean, in total, what we're occupying is about fourteen thousand, a hundred and fifty square feet?
Out of curiosity, again, being a gas guy, where's the LNG tanks gonna go?
Okay, so, there's already a bank of LNG on the other side. We already have some here. We're, we're gonna split with our neighbors and put, there's a gas tank farm contemplated there, so I'm just gonna put a tall tank. Put a big tank from Airgas, or Lindy.
Is that, that's gonna be propane?
Yeah.
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 Just, uh, I'll give you a warning from being a gas guy working for EverSource, you have a little bit of problem with that being so close to the tank.
I gotta move it to the inside?
National, uh, Fire Protection, NFPA, will have a little bit of problem with electrical indoors being so close to a tank, usually there's a ten-foot. Again, your engineers will tell you this, but.
Yeah, then I can throw it back here. I've got enough space.
I'm just giving you a heads up, that's all.
Alright.
Make sure some planning. Alright, that's it for me. And I won't stamp it, because I can't say that's official.
You're gonna repaint the outside?
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah. No, th- this is really just show, uh, we're not making any kind of substantial change to the outside. Outside of, uh, all the doors are obviously being changed out.
Windows.
Yeah, they're all security doors. Well, windows are all knocked out. Uh, they're getting replaced with siding and honeycomb on the inside. I mean, for security and for a whole bunch of other reasons, we just can't have, can't have windows there. Like I was mentioning before, all of our shipments now come in through this door. This other door is a compacted container.
Yep.
Uh, that'll take all the remnant. And, uh, there's also a shade fence, so you won't be able to see it from the street.
And I, I, again, didn't have a lot of time to read this, but for the CCC, did you have to come up with a security plan and all that stuff for them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just, I mean, I hadn't had a chance to read this before.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, all, all of the doors are all on pushbar for emergency purposes, but they're all Magneto.
They got door switches to go back to.
Yeah, it's all controlled from that security office, and, and they have to, yeah.
Alright, good enough. And then, of course, the other, you've got like an operating O and M book that go to our fire chief collect for all that stuff?
Yeah.
For anything they've gotta do? Have they gotta have a special phone or anything like that?
No, and he asked for a Knox box, too, to be placed. So, well, we're gonna put two Knox boxes, one in front of this electrical room, and then, over here, there's the electrical room that already feeds the facility, of which we are taking, uh, something like four hundred and fifty amps where the service from on three meters. We'll put another Knox box out here, so they'll have access to both.
Do you, again, this really, just a question, do you gotta do all the upgrade to electrical for all this equipment? Because I'm sure Sims didn't use.
Well, no, 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 what, what, what we've done is for the general, for the shell, or for the building envelope, we're utilizing four hundred and fifty amps that are already run to the, to the building. For our process, uh, pretty much everything that's contained inside of these blocks comes out of a new transformer.
Alright.
Yeah, and is backed up by a new generator.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, I, I'm gonna keep the shell running on, you know, their four hundred and fifty, and as many heat pumps and, you know, whatever I can work out there. But our process really runs on our own service.
Let me give you one piece of advice from an engineer's standpoint. Get rid of that Generac and put a Kohler in, if you wanna keep that process.
You have a Kohler?
Yeah, I, again, work for EverSource, and we're replacing all of our gas operation systems with Kohlers, because our Generacs are just not reliable. So, we've got a program in place where we're replacing our Generacs with Kohlers, so, just a piece of advice.
Really?
Yeah. Kohler is?
Does MassSave have a rebate for it?
But if you, and EverSource is gas, I guarantee you're paying me for it.
Yeah. And, no, they're expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, you're paying for the reliability, and if you have a power outage, um, that, you've got an, you'll have an automatic transfer switch and all that stuff, but the Kohlers have never failed us to today. Um, Generac, we've had issues with, and we've had to send, we've, uh, we've got like, maintenance personnel that can go out there and run the stations manually if have to. We don't like to do that, because it takes away all of our staff. So, just a piece of advice, talk to your engineer, maybe they got a different opinion, but, uh, that's just some engineering advice.
I mean, that generator that was inside there, we looked at, that was a, a Generac?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's an older one.
Yeah, yeah, this was variable hours. Yeah. Yeah, which is almost scary from a standpoint, because
It's never been maintained, most of the way.
Well, yeah, 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 if you don't use it, you're not maintaining it, yeah.
But there again, yeah, it's got life left.
Yeah.
But it's the older style.
Yeah.
Tim, it's not, not like the Nora style.
So, it actually has a carburetor?
No, no, it's not diesel, no.
It's diesel?
No. No, 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 it's not diesel, that guy's, uh, anyhow.
No people, but without a carburetor.
Yeah, yeah, without a carburetor.
Yeah, that's right, excellent. I listen to.
Those are just stacks.
Individuals, yeah.
Yeah.
These are individual layouts.
So, are you still pushing for late fall, really winter?
Yes, sir.
For open?
Or, late summer.
Late summer.
Late summer.
So, is all this run by basically like, uh, and again, I apologize, controls engineer too, like a PLC?
Yes, right here.
So, it's all?
Yeah, right there?
Yep.
That's the PLC.
Okay.
Uh, and that runs, uh, it'll run way more than this building, but it?
It's all process control PLC.
Hundred percent, yeah. It controls the lights, the wavelengths, the fertigation system, the mixing of chemicals, the delivery. Everything run, it's all solenoid-valved out the whole way through. It's on timers, so it's all phased. Uh, so, the whole building isn't on at the same time, because that would be very expensive.
Is Agrotech the name of the, uh, company that, uh?
Yeah.
Alright, just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they make all the programmable logic controllers, or, well, they assemble it.
Yeah.
The components are?
Don't worry about that, I, I'll go look at it, I'm just curious.
But, yeah, yeah, no, take a look. Their technology is great, and it's incredibly efficient.
And obviously, they've done this at more than one place, so this is not their first rodeo.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
Heat pumps.
Heat pumps.
Yeah, so, we run our, our flower rooms, and anywhere where we're actively cultivating or have anything under canopy, obviously generate enough heat where I, I don't need a heat pump. I can just run condensers, and just run an enthalpy switch.
Yep.
You know, and use the outside, yeah, and it's efficient.
Putting anything on the roof, or it's all gonna stay inside?
The condensers go up on the roof.
Okay.
Um, for this system, as well as for the heat pumps, um, everything else stays inside.
Alright.
What kind of ambient temperature do you have to have for doing this?
Uh, they'll range between sixty-seven, seventy, depending on what is in process.
Yeah, that's perfect for cigars.
Yeah, it's a nice humidor, yeah.
I'll take the backspace.
Yeah, it's a nice humidor.
Alright. I don't have any questions, Norm, I'm, the sign plans are pretty, uh?
You had gone with us.
Yeah. I'd have been looking through the corners trying to find Sims' cap parts.
We found a lot of remnants, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Pulling more stuff back a lot.
Their drawings, or their old blueprint drawings are worth, they're weight in gold for anybody, because?
I wish I would've found those. I just found their old signs. I'm trying to decorate my place.
Their blueprints, they actually, they were shop drawings. You could actually make caps from their shop drawings.
Guys, yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry, um, I, maybe this isn't appropriate, but you need to ask, um, what is, is there any, um, I don't know the proper term, odor control or anything? Um, that is in place, or, um, how is the, the, how are the sensors managed, I guess?
You mean? Odor, like any odor control, so there's any odor from the plants that, uh, does it get outside the building?
No, it, it's almost impossible. Uh, the way that the, that the zones are set up is, uh, everything that's processed is under higher pressure, so it all blows out into lower-pressure zones, but all the lower-pressure zones are all carbon-filtered. So, I mean, the outside air doesn't touch inside air, and inside air.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's basically a pressurized building.
By zones.
Okay. Leah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does, thank you, I appreciate it.
So, it's like the lab you're in, we don't let you get out of it without your, without your outside air?
Right, I, I'm used to that.
And it's not gonna be like Houston.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Excellent.
Anybody?
No.
Any questions?
I still wanna read this, but I'm pretty, I don't see any issue. What is our action tonight? What was gonna be our action? To approve the special permit?
Apparently, they, they are under a little bit of pressure for, from, I don't know, other organizations, let me just put this right.
You brought gummies?
Yeah, good thing you brought that up.
We don't have a manufacturing license yet.
Just testing.
But we will be back.
If we will.
We will be back in due time.
In order to show?
For that manufacturing license.
In order for us to begin architectural review and control commission, we wouldn't need a special permit, so. So, we are, time crunch is a bit accurate, yeah.
But I think, part of the question for the board is, uh, do you feel comfortable with, with what you see, such that you can make a decision tonight? That's really the critical concern.
That, 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 uh?
Merrill?
I don't have any problems.
Okay.
The other side of this is that, obviously, the actual special permit document is gonna be fairly involved. So, that is not going to?
The minutes will suffice.
Okay, minutes will suffice. Uh, another suggestion that I made to, to Dave is that he could just pen a quick letter indicating that we did vote to approve, if that would work better.
Yeah, now, I agree fantastic. Whatever we can submit, so that we can have this work through the next step, would be great.
Like you say, the actual certificate is gonna take.
Yeah, it's gonna take a bit. No, we understand.
So. Uh, is there any other question, comments, or anything from the board or the public?
I'll make a motion to approve the?
Pardon me, I appreciate the closing of the hearing.
Sorry.
You make the motion.
Make a motion to pause the hearing. Yep, sorry.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Make a motion.
Pardon me, I see, I need to go.
Thank you very much.
There's just one, we have standard conditions on this, but there's one condition in particular that we want on here, and that is snow storage. That snow storage, be put in appropriate areas respecting any conservation area. We're, we're gonna refine that condition. Your plans don't show snow storage locations.
Okay.
Just so you're aware of that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, thank you.
Gotcha, we will work on that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I guess motion for approval of special permit for the Mass Tree Holding, cannabis cultivation facility at seventy-nine, eighty-one, eight-two, eighty-one Main Street.
Agreeable.
With standard, um, or, uh, conditions, uh, along with a special condition that needs to be added for snow removal location. That's appropriate. Storage. Location. That's appropriate.
Second that?
Okay, anything else? Any discussion, anywhere, hon?
Need all forms for this one?
Do you, do you, uh, want to maybe, maybe amend that, and to also have Tom Planner pen a letter indicating?
Oh, yes, uh, I, thanks, Norm. Um, uh, in addition to that is, um, send a, uh, email slash letter to the applicant indicating our vote before we have the official, uh, special permit for signature, indicating that, uh, the status of the vote, since I don't wanna say yea or nay, because we haven't voted yet, but.
I meant my motion approval.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Could we make a condition that they give us a tour whenever finished?
I, I would, I would really like to see this, this thing.
You're welcome anytime.
Absolutely. It'd be an honor and a privilege.
Thank you.
I, I, I'd just like to, to get a tour before you bring in any plants.
Yeah.
Okay, but when all of the other equipment is in there, so you can have a good look at?
We'll have the plane board out.
Pre-production tour.
That'd be great, that'd be great for us also. That'd make things go full circle. Forward to that.
Yeah.
Call, call it August? Call, call it August? See you guys then.
August.
See you guys then.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, nothing, perfect.
So, you've got it?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Get to work, get to work.
Yeah.
Never had this much information before.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your help again. You for us, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Happy to have you.
Excellent, thanks, all right. Appreciate it. Acme made some money too. I didn't, I didn't know they still existed over on Grove Street. Blueprint Company, they used to do blueprints. Which was a lot of ammonia for those old blueprints. Now, now they use, print it out on paper with, uh, HP. Okay, what else we got?
Uh, I think...
Can we get Maple Hill bomb reduction?
Yeah, you did all the bomb reductions. The only thing left on the agenda is the master plan update.
God, I'm sorry, I missed that.
So, would you like me to talk about that?
Yes.
Just really briefly, I know it's getting weighed here. So the master plan steering committee, as folks know, has been meeting on a monthly basis. Uh, all the chapters except open space recreation are at about a ninety, ninety-five percent, um, they're at about ninety, ninety-five percent completion rate. Um, there's a few more things to be done, one more meeting, and then the next step after that, the, uh, chapters will be, will be distributed to the public for any comments that the public may have for a period of time. After that, we're looking to get a presentation before the select board on the master plan in its entirety, with or without open space, that's still to be determined. And then it will be approved by the planning board, uh, shortly thereafter, with copies being made up for the planning board members to take a look at. So it's getting very close to completion, and over the next couple of months, we expect to wrap it up on that project.
I just find it very, very interesting, this master plan, the only approval required is the planning board.
That's how we got the grant for the first one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, it just seems a little bit...
Odd.
Odd that something like this wouldn't need to go to town meeting or the select board or something like this, but that's the way the law reads.
Well, I hope our, our new town administrator uses this as the bible.
Well, the, I, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, the timing of hopefully getting this thing done in the next couple, three months is probably going to be very good timing for when we do get this new town administrator. That he can take a look at it.
Yep. It'd be very interesting, I, I'd like to, the open space, I'd love to look through that and see how they did.
Yeah, apparently, they're kind of struggling.
Right, so open space is done on a different cycle than the master plan, so it's done on a seven-year cycle. Uh, it happened to coincide with the master plan effort, so it is a master plan chapter. Uh, the idea was to bring it together into one document, one book, uh, if possible. Um, the CMRPC is working with the open space committee and the master plan steering committee on some technical aspects of the plan. Um, however, the scope did not involve a writing of the chapter, but technical support such as maps and other information like that. So we'll see if it can be brought in at this time, otherwise it might be brought in as an addendum, um, at a future time. The goal was to work, bring them all together into one document, if at all possible.
Anyway. I think that's about it.
Wow.
Any, any, anything else from the public? Leah, anything else to say?
No, I'm good, thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Leah, thanks for attending.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Much like you're trying to get back to it.
Yeah. What did you say?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.